Or started in one.
Thank you.
Helps if we don't throw it away.
Is it my turn?
Mr. Chair, I think our technologies are ready to go. We got GoTo back, the live streaming is back going, so I think we are ready to go.
At this time Roxanne, Department of Development.
Okay. All right, pretty straightforward request this morning. It's an amendment to our subdivision ordinance. We had missed changing residual lot sizes within a plat. So previously, anything under 20 acres was required to be platted. We made changes to our administrative subdivisions so that anything 10 acres or less was platted, but anything greater than 10 or greater was an administrative certificate of survey meets and bounds description. So we just want to make sure that our plating requirements match our administrative subdivision requirements and make that change from 20 acres down to 10 acres for residual lots.
Okay, and this requires a public hearing?
Yep.
So, we already know we're gonna have a public hearing, and is that your staff report?
Yep.
Okay, and you are the applicant, I take it?
Yeah. But the county is.
The county is the applicant, okay. So now we'll open a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the county board on this item? If so, please come to the podium, state your name and address. I see nobody. Final call for anyone wishing to address the county board. Final call for public testimony. Seeing none, the public hearing is now closed. Has there been any emails, letters, or communications to be read for the record?
No.
Has the department received any comments or concerns from state agencies, cities, townships on this agenda?
No.
If any official action was required by an affected township, was there action?
There was no action necessary.
There was no action, okay. The county board will now have time for questions of the staff and discussions. Also, a reminder to the audience, the public hearing is now closed. If there are any questions or concerns from board members before we take action on this item. Any questions?
Chair, I can tell you that the planning commission looked at this the other evening too and gave full recommendation to the county board to approve this.
Thanks for that input. Any other discussion from the county board? Okay, I will ask for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve ordinance 481, amending the County Development Code Ordinance 477. Second.
Motion's been made, second it to approve the ordinance, what is it? 477?
481.
Or 481. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 opposed. Carried.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks Roxanne.
Monty, and then we're gonna discuss Benton County.
Sure, the next two items are Amanda's.
Good morning, commissioners.
Morning.
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 How are you guys today?
Awesome.
Good. So I just wanted to bring this up to you as far as conducting or talking about the possibility of partnering with our cities and our county to conduct a housing study, and I think it's something that's really important to bring to your attention just to kind of give you an overview of how this came up is, you know, knowing that Foley's wastewater connection to St. Cloud to Foley will likely bring a lot of new possibilities for development. It's a really good idea to understand some of the needs for housing in our county. In addition to that, the other thing that, you know, we've been working on, as you know, is a lot of industrial, new industrial development in our county. And how does that affect housing, the housing need and the housing market in our community? Specifically affordable housing, you know, market rate housing, multifamily housing, senior housing, that sort of thing. So a housing study, I don't know if necessarily familiar with it. I don't think the county has done a housing study, a comprehensive housing study, if you will. But basically, it would take a look at countywide what those housing needs are. And especially, you know, like I said, when we're looking at new industrial development and the wastewater project from Foley to St. Cloud, it's a good idea to understand what that need is. The housing market study typically provides recommendations on the amount and type of housing that should be developed to meet the needs of the current and future demand. And sometimes that demand can look into the next five to 10 years to kind of understand what that demand or what that need is. I've talked to all of our partner cities, so I've talked to Todd and Julie, Sarah, Anna, and Louise. And they understand too that there is a need for a housing study of some sort. Not every city has budgeted dollars for the completion of a housing study. I think only one has, but maybe it's something, you know, I just wanted to bring it up to you to see if there was interest by the county to maybe move forward and to see what the cost of completing a housing study is and to see if there is any interest by the cities for some participation or, you know, what that timeframe looks like. And maybe there's an opportunity too to use some of those ARPA funds for the completion of the housing study, especially when it comes to understanding what the affordable need is in our county. So I wanted to open it up for discussion to see if there is anything that you have questions about, maybe, and I didn't identify the cost, it could, it ranges. The last countywide housing study that I was involved in, I think, cost right around between $40,000 and $50,000. So there is a substantial investment to it. But I think the benefit of having a housing study is far greater than the cost. And the benefit would be, you know, that you can use that housing study for policy decisions. The cities can utilize that study also for their policy decisions as they look at housing. And then the other benefit would be just to identify those needs, right? And this is a document that you can give to a developer that is looking at developing housing in our county. So when we, you know, attract a new industry that may be bringing, you know, 300 or 400 jobs or more, you know, something along that lines, you know, this is a tool that a developer can use to understand what that need is. So those are the benefits of having a housing study. I just wanted to open it up for discussion.
Chair, do you have a question?
Mr. Chair, just a clarification, Amanda, we kind of briefly talked on this. But this is a plan that can be updated every three years. So once you do this initial investment, it gets substantially more inexpensive as you go along and update.
Exactly. Yep, yep, we would.
Mr. Chair, Amanda, you touched a little bit on American Rescue Plan dollars. Are you comfortable with saying that those dollars could be spent on that yet?
Not yet. I don't know that we have solid direction on how those dollars are spent yet. But it's something that we can continue to watch as we move forward. This is not something that is, that needs to be done right away, but we should really be thinking about it in the coming months.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Right.
Amanda, if we do decide to do this study, how long of a process is this?
Roughly anywhere between three to six months to complete the study. Typically, I want to say it's right around that three to four months, but giving them a little extra cushion. There's a lot of data that's involved in completing a housing study, and that would require us BEP to collect that data for the consultant that would be completing the housing study.
Yes.
And at that point in time, we would be working with all of our cities too, then?
Yeah, we would work with all of our partner cities, collecting that data, making sure that data is delivered to the consultant, and that would complete that housing study.
So when you were involved in the other one, was this a collaboration between the county and the cities? So 40,000 to 50,000 total, would we look for, you know, the cities to donate to the cause a little bit?
If they have interest in doing that, the housing study that I was involved in, the county actually put in the entire bill for it because it was a benefit to all the cities and the townships and the county itself.
I see we got two of our city administrators.
Yeah, and I actually invited our partner cities to speak on this issue if you'd like to talk to them about it. I know that some cities have budgeted, like I said, but not all of them have.
I know, you know, we've heard enough about what Foley's pretty limited on what they can and can't do till we get their, you know, their wastewater system done. But Julie, what has Rice got to offer for housing? Are they getting to the point where they need to look at another development?
Yeah, there already is a couple developments being looked at in Rice again.
Okay.
And I know that Sauk Rapids, just in my conversation with Sauk Rapids, I know that their need for a housing study exists. I mean, I know they've done just very specific or, you know, specific types of housing studies, but nothing that has been comprehensive.
Mr. Chair, this is just for Benton County?
It would be just for Benton County, so all the cities and townships that would participate would be in Benton County.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I can tell you from my perspective, I feel like a broken record on spending money right now. I, one big business that comes in that uses this, they do use these studies to relocate and to build in our area. One business coming into this area pays for this.
Yep, you're correct on that. And I'm sure you've talked to the cities that, you know, Foley and Sauk Rapids would truly support that.
I mean, you know, really it comes down to just knowing what we have and what we need in our county. And I think it's about time to kind of think about those things, especially when we have major projects going on in our county.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Amanda, are you looking for some consensus from the board to move ahead and getting some information on a housing study?
That's correct.
Is that where you're at, or?
Yep, that's, I'm not asking you guys to commit to anything today that would come, you know, later, but a consensus among the commissioners to move forward with collecting information and pricing.
That would be more or less for your participation from BEP as the executive director to move forward with this a little bit. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chair, from our MICHA conference, it was M I C A or whatever.
Yep.
Yep. Anyway, I truly believe that this is gonna fall within the parameters because you could, in my opinion, you could piggyback this with broadband expansion and be able to identify housing developments potential, and so you can make sure the broadband is there. So I personally think it's gonna fall in the realm. I don't know that, I'm not a legislator like that, but I think the chances are pretty good.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, is there possible for any input from the residents on this? They could have any say-so in it.
I don't know that that would be possible. It would be really difficult to do that.
I would think that the people are affected by the whole thing, that they should be a part of it too.
Well, I think, yeah, they probably could have some opinion, but like to do a survey, that would be way out of the ram for, we would be so wide spectrum of pros and cons that we could never get it done. I think this is looking more basically at what is needed, not what, you know, not what this resident thinks and that resident thinks we should or should not do. That would be my opinion, though. I mean, I wouldn't want to go through Rice and ask Rice, every resident in Rice, what do you think of more development? No way. I mean, so I don't think that would be a positive.
What kind of developer are you, and are you interested in?
Well, it'd be housing. This is strictly housing. The other development for industry runs through BEP primarily.
Commissioner Shlongen, if I will, the housing study would be a comprehensive housing study for the entire county. So we could identify where the need for housing is in respect of communities.
Does it take into consideration what people coming into the area want for housing too?
It takes in consideration the demand for housing.
The demand, okay. Okay, so I guess we'd be looking for kind of a consent, are we on board to let her move forward on this a little bit?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
There's your answer for that part.
Thank you.
And then you have approved resolution for supportive telecommunication forward.
Yeah, I'm gonna invite Jim Martinson to conduct a presentation. Monty, do you know if the presentation is on here? Or do you want me?
It's in the packets.
Oh, it's in the packets.
It's in the packets, yeah.
Did you, is there a way I could put it on? I have my.
Do you have it on blast train?
I do.
Okay.
I can put it on.
Sure, we can do that.
Yep.
Why don't you go and plug it in and I'll do the rest.
Make sure he passes those milky ways, don't worry.
You might not get it passed.
Cross our fingers and hope this works. Which one?
Yep, oh wait, turn it over. And then we'll do the presentation.
Which one?
One more down.
Right there?
Oh, come on. Yeah, we'll just, I think that one's in PDF.
There we go.
Should I work, okay?
I think so.
Okay. I got one more thing here. Why do I need Roxanne here? Because she's really good at this.
That's why it's important for her to be here.
She's our technical advisor for GoToMedia. All right, you can just use the mouse to scroll. Yeah, just use that wheel and I'll get you through. Okay.
You got that, Jim? Okay, I'm gonna invite Jim Martinson up to talk a little bit about the Telecommuter Forward program, and he'll kind of give you some background information on it as well. So Jim?
Okay.
Thank you. Yeah, and then you just scroll with the wheel.
Okay.
It says it's in a PDF.
Is this in presentation mode, or is it?
Well, it's just a PDF, so you just scroll.
Okay. Okay.
And then do you need access to video too?
I would like it, but.
I'll let you introduce it and then.
Okay.
See if I can get this to go here.
Oh, I'm sorry, you had a video embedded in it, okay.
Yeah, I don't know if it's gonna work, but.
Oh, yeah. So Monty, we have that in 10 minutes.
Okay, sorry about that.
So Amanda, will this be done in 10 minutes? We have another close.
Yeah. Well, go ahead.
I hate that.
I'm gonna all work on this.
Yeah, it looks like you just hit play there. You just click on it. There you go.
Welcome, Jim.
Good morning, Jim. Greetings to the commissioners, the staff. Actually, my journey with telecommuting really started over 25 years ago. I was a systems manager for a manufacturing company in the Twin Cities, and I was approached by one of the buyers that had been diagnosed with AMS, and she lived in Wisconsin. And the trip was getting more and more difficult for her to accomplish her job. So back in the day, we were able to hook her up with a dial-up into the mainframe, and she was able to continue work from home even back then. So from that point on, I've kind of seen it as a just untapped resource that is coming about, but not as well as it could, I think. The Cambridge video, and it's only two minutes, but it was a progress report of a project at Cambridge that the Minnesota Department of Transportation had back in 1995, I believe it was, yeah.
Should I see if I can show it?
See if you can show it.
In today's hectic world, we are constantly searching for new and better ways to balance work and family time in our lives. The rapid growth and availability.
Yeah, it's not working.
Oh, okay.
Sorry, Jim.
No. Okay, what's interesting about it, of course, the tools that was available in 95 were pretty archaic as far as what's available today. But the principle was the same, and there's testimonials there of those that were doing teleworking and what a benefit it was to them. Okay, let's go on then. Since then, the last 25 years or so, books have been written. People have studied this and made it part of the curriculum. Of course, training has been developed as far as what people want, how to manage it, what are some of the legal ramifications. A lot of that has already been studied, and there's an education for the employers and employee. One term that comes into play here is R O, results-oriented work environment. And what that does is it shifts from just being at the spot to what do you do and what do we expect you, what are your results? And then the timeframe, if a person's working from home or remotely, it becomes rather up to the individual as long as they meet the overall goals of the company. Since 1995, of course, the thing that has really come into play here is the internet is made at a low-cost availability that wasn't available back in the 90s. And of course, that has been a real game changer for the whole telecommuting, which has been going on, or it's been growing somewhat. And of course, we look at Benton County. Benton County is actually, there's a lot of area that is in a good place for doing telecommuting. We can see the green being good service. I look at Foley, and I'm currently the contact for Foley's telecommuting project. And they have adequate for today. Their download speed is relatively good. For those that are in numbers, it's 300 to download. The upload speed is more of an issue with what's available, and that's, a resident did a check for me, and it's like 11, I think, was the number up. And if there's a lot of data to push back to the employer, that's an issue. But is it adequate? Well, it's on the edge. Of course. Okay. And of course, we got the lower east side of Benton County. The coverage there is lacking, is the way to best put it. Benton Communication, of course, I've got a, I happen to live seven miles east of Foley, and if you can see the arrow there, I got in on their, on Benton Communications fiber to the house. So in some ways, my need has been met, but it's almost by a fluke. How it happened, I don't know. Some things you just don't question. Okay. Now, any questions there? I should. By the way, this came from, there's just a ton of maps out there, and this came from D E D, from the Employment and Economic Development Group. COVID has been interesting, to say the least, because this has forced people to try telecommuting. And it was probably one of the, I'll say, benefits that have come out of this crisis in that it has forced people to say, well, maybe I can do this. Personally, I saw that some time ago, but I think getting management on board with this and getting structures in companies to do this, it took something like this to really put telecommuting on steroids. Now, will everybody today that's working from home stay there? No, but I suspect a large percentage are going to want to. And what they're putting up with today might not be adequate for what they might want to do in the long range. What is telecommuter forward certification actually about? Well, it's a Minnesota statute that really, statute really only has two elements to it. One is you select a contact person, kind of the person that's on point to collect the information from various groups, and then a strong statement to support the objectives of telecommuting. I like to differentiate between an objective and a goal. This goes with objectives and is certainly important. But the next step then that follows, that's really not part of this, but it's a logical conclusion, is that of setting goals. An objective with a date becomes a goal. What are some of the objectives? Well, there are coordination and partnership with various providers, collaboration with the providers and employers and employees, communication and partnership, promotion of telecommuter-friendly workplaces. This might be in addition to just work at home. It might be work at local. Workspaces, familiarity with the mapping tools. There's a lot of mapping out there. You have to kind of take the time to go through and learn what they really mean. And there's a lot of outdated information out there too, I'll give you a heads up. Maintaining regular communications, standard importance here, of course, and regular reports. All I want to show here is that there was a statute. What I find interesting about this statute, it was actually made in 2019, so it wasn't a knee-jerk reaction to COVID. But it's spot on as far as the need for telecommunicating. Here is the resolution boilerplate for you, if you want to proceed with that. And I think that's about it. Any questions, I should?
Questions?
Is there a cost?
Not really for the implementations now. As far as Foley, I'm the contact point, and I'm retired, and so I'm getting social security, and so you guys are paying for it. And the social security.
That's really spread out.
Pretty good. So, any questions? Anything else for Jim? So I want to thank you, Jim. Jim's been around a long time. He was, came in actually when we started some of the BEP work in the beginning. You were in and talked about this, and that must be, what, five years ago or something?
Yeah, even longer.
Longer than that, I know. So he's been a resource in the county, he lives in the county, and he's got a good friend I know up in the Rice area, Greg Bristol, that he talks to a lot. So we've kind of a mutual friend there, and I understand that you were pretty lucky on getting Benton Communications to your place.
Mr. Chair, if it's appropriate, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the resolution for certification for the Telecommuter Forward community. Second.
Motion's been made, second. Any other discussion? Monty?
Mr. Chair, Amanda, when I got the draft resolution, I stuck in myself as the point of contact. But if there's someone else who'd be more appropriate for that, I'm happy to resign.
Jim, is that something you would be willing to?
I just wanted to make sure that was clear. I just stuck myself in here, not knowing who would be the best, so. I would be willing to do that. I'm on the point now for Foley.
Yes, okay.
We already have them on payroll.
Chair, then I will amend my motion to include Jim Martinson as the contact person, then.
I'll continue with the second. All right, so it's motion's been made, second.
Is that all right with you, Monty? Is that all right with you or me?
Absolutely.
To move forward with the resolution? Any other discussion? All in favor? Single person saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Carrie? Congratulations, Jim, and thanks again for coming before us.
Thank you.
So we have to have a closed session now.
Yes, sir, we need a motion to go on closed session under attorney-client. And again, for the folks that are joining us by GoTo, we're gonna need to close out that session, but we'll relaunch it as soon as we're done with this.